Not there? Okay. It is a call to order on the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:32 PM on Monday, January 13th, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has God here, can I pray?
Perfect. It's great timing.
My windshield took a while to de-ice, you know? God, thank you that each person is here today, that we have health to be here, that we have safety to be here. I pray that their work here for our city will be rewarded tonight, that they all get home safely, even if the roads get slippery, and I pray that everything we do here tonight would be coming from a place of wisdom, coming from a place of love for our community. We pray, Lord, for your guidance upon this group of administrators for our city. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, did everybody get a chance to read through the minutes? Entertained motions to...
Motion to approve.
First and second, is there any discussion? Go to vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Minutes are approved as written. We have some changes to the agenda.
Mayor, we got 10B, like to add for continuation of MPC breakfast.
Okay, that's an addition.
Yep, and then we have 11B to remove under legal issues, call for a closed session for administrator benefit package.
And we have 16A.
Yeah, 16A to discuss city administrator position.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
First and second, is there any discussion or questions? Go to vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmers?
Aye. The agenda is approved as amended. Does anybody have any conflicts of interest this evening? Hearing none will move on. Anybody have any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda? Okay. This public hearing, is that for 6:45 is my guess?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll move on and come back to that. Motor vehicle driver's license summary for 2019. That was...
Was the addition that...
A Peggy sent out?
Yep.
Okay. Did everybody read that? Anybody have any questions? Everybody get a chance to read through that? As much as they need to. Do the gambling permit request for Chamber of Commerce?
Make a motion to approve.
And questions or discussion? Is this for...
For their boxcar days.
That's...
Chamber banquet, yep.
For the banquet, for the, it's like raffles and stuff, or what?
Booze wing.
Okay.
I had to raise money for...
Fundraiser. So, is any other questions or discussion? Vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Andy Dimmers?
Aye. So, the gambling permit request is approved. Continuation of the MPC breakfast.
I put this in there, currently do not have a cook over there for our portion of the city breakfast that they've been providing. She had moved on to a different position. Just wondering, it's not making money at all. Do we want to continue that program? Guess it'd be a good point to make that decision.
Are we losing money?
Yes.
How much?
I think last I looked, it was about 800 bucks a year.
I hate to lose that though. I mean, I think a lot of people...
But a lot of that crowd want to keep it, and actually found somebody who's licensed and permitted to keep it going and willing to do it.
I would hate to...
I have some interests, being it's a position we haven't advertised yet, but I do have an interested party that would be willing to take over, so...
I think if there's somebody potentially interested and we haven't even advertised it yet, I think I'd like to see it move forward and continue.
If that, if the situation changes, we can always re-approach.
I know when they first started it, their intent was to keep it open until something in town was open to offer breakfast in the morning, kind of after the rooster closes, so I guess there's nothing yet, so...
Yeah.
I just wanted to see what your guys' thoughts on that.
Sounds like it need remains.
You know, I have been approached, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, I have been approached about reconsidering having a committee of people that support the senior center. You know, we got away with the board and everything, and even if it wasn't a board, if it was like more of a just like advisory of people that work, not work, that frequently, that kind of know what troubles, especially with, right now with the administrator position and everything, interim administrator doesn't have time to keep your fingers on that pulse at all. I mean, you're trying to keep your fingers on the major departments about considering having a committee that would, they would meet and communicate with the administrator, kind of like the old board, I guess, did. But I think we want to look at how we would form it, because I don't want to get into where there's confusion as to who's in control of what and stuff like that.
And that's the kind of way it dissolved before, is because of that. Senior Dining, I know they meet yet, and I think they, kind of the intent was, if they had any issues with that group, would they bring it to us, but I don't know if you guys recollect it and anything there, but...
I think that's the way it was when they, there was a lot of power struggle in that board with people exercising authority that they didn't have, so they eliminated the board and were given the instruction, if you have any issues, bring it to Senior Dining, and Senior Dining can bring it to the city.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's three or four of the people that use it all the time, they want to get together, hey, this is what's going on, there's nothing stopping them from doing that right now. It's just they're, it's not in an official board.
And then they would bring it to who?
They'd bring it to the administrator, or come up to the council, bring it to us.
But it wouldn't be something that we officially sanctioned as an organization. It would be a community thing that they can come to a meeting itself.
So, more or less, anyone that frequents it or whatever and has a concern, it should just more or less go to the administrator is how it's set up?
That's kind of what's been happening.
And you feel that that's working, and you feel...
And we don't get too many...
Well, but that's what I'm kind of getting the feeling of, is people aren't feeling comfortable with that process, and so that maybe some things aren't getting addressed as soon as maybe they could be if there were a couple people that were named the spokespeople, even if... I'm just trying to think how we can do it to not get into the power struggle thing again, but to have some people feel that they're accountable, that that's who, okay, if I'm going down there and I have concerns, I don't feel comfortable going to the city administrator, but I could go to citizen XYZ and talk to them, because they feel more comfortable talking to the administrator than I don't. You know, a lot of the elderly do not feel...
What does that mean?
They have our...
It's not just...
They have an employee down there, Jerry, they can go to the employee, and the employee can bring it to the administrator. You know, instead of creating another board, if they have an issue they want to see addressed, go to the employee.
And the employee is Carla, or...
Oh, don't give me names or...
Or Linda Thomas.
Linda Thomas.
And even if their problem is with that employee, they don't want to go and, you know, we have a public forum every meeting?
Yep.
Well, and I'm not saying the problem is that they don't feel comfortable going to Linda, I think maybe that, as long as I know to direct people, the person you need to go to now, because there isn't a board, is Linda Thomas.
Yep, let Linda know.
And that's who you need to go to, because they don't feel comfortable bothering an administrator or whatever.
I know, like, the morning breakfast, those guys always reach out to me if they have a problem, but I guess I don't know which group. I mean, a lot of the problems I see there is between groups, too. You know, someone used my whatever and...
Well, I guess it makes sense, though, that since the board was dissolved, there was nothing put forth specifically as far as procedure for complaints or any issues that somebody may have. So, you know, we can establish that right now in, with this meeting and say, well, okay, this is your POC, and, you know, I don't think we need a board to do that, but it would probably be helpful if they had some direction as to...
Well, this is at least the step.
Yeah.
Right.
And if this isn't working, then we can get more detailed, why isn't it working?
Sure.
But this is the step that they know it's Linda, and does Linda know that that's her? She probably does now.
I mean, she usually, if there's someone complains there, she is, you know, she's informed me of things in the past, so I would...
I think it's good work.
...there.
And what I was...
And memorial side, too, so...
And what I was saying before was, if it just so happened that the person you had an issue with, or whatever was the person, was Linda, then, you know, we also have the option of just coming to the administrator or straight to council with a public, you know, so there's more than one avenue that can be used.
Or even City Hall, I suppose they could give the complaint to one of the gals there and then relay it to...
They could. So, we're going to, we need a motion to continue the breakfast?
No.
No? Okay, that's informational.
It's already existing, so longer not, discontinued.
All right, we have, I'm at 6:45, so at this time, we can open the public hearing for the request to place a memorial sign for Dennis Morgan. Does anybody have anything for that?
Kind of give you, unless Rosemary wants to explain it, but...
So, this started out, first it came to planning and zoning, and it was a request from a community member who is related to Denny, and they were talking about erecting a sign on the east end of town, on the south side, because that's where he would get dropped off by his dad when he would go hitchhiking to do his gigs when he was in high school. We talked about it and sent it onto the council, knowing full well that that's a right-of-way, that's a highway, there's a whole lot more going to come into play there, and just what planning and zoning will have to say about it, but it's a neat idea, but that's kind of how it got to you guys.
And where is this?
Well, it would be on, okay...
Across the road from Premium.
From Premium Plant, Premium Plant Services, that's where his dad always dropped him off, and then he would hitchhike to Mankate or wherever it was he had a gig when he was in high school. So, that's, that's the idea behind it being there. We saw there was really no reason we would turn it down, but he's going to run into some issues with the state right-of-way and all kinds of other things, and that's, you know, that's their deal, but...
It is a little bit of a tough area, because it's also where the speed limit changed from 35 to 60 now, and it's also where they coming over the hill, so... What, Minna, I mean, that's, that's on Minna to make that decision, but usually they want it to start here and then start going up the chain.
Because we had suggested that maybe he wouldn't want to do it out at the Wheels Across the Prairie Museum, but the significance is the spot where he got dropped off, so that's how we got here.
So, you're more or less asking for just permission for it to go up the ladder?
Right, we just, we made the recommendation to send it on, and so now it's before you. You guys are going to send it on, and then it's going to run into a whole bunch of red tape, so, but it's just the sentimentality of him wanting, of this family member wanting it there for him is where it's happening.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything to say on the public hearing? We'll close the public hearing at this time. And the question of the request, then, anybody have any discussion or...
I don't have a problem with the request at all, I'm, some concerns, I know the EDA was looking to do something similar to this, and reached out and was told adamantly not to, that the individual didn't want that type of recognition, and I would like to be assured that it's not going against the individual's wishes if we do this before we go any further.
To us, the planning and zoning, it is behalf. So, that's how we got to here, we were...
Yeah, that would be something to check on, because like I said...
Adamantly opposed, wasn't quite...
Yeah, he was, no, do not put a sign up for me, so...
So, do we make a motion that it can move forward contingent on getting verification that the individual is...
Okay with it?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that either.
Yeah.
I'll handle that.
I just want it, just want it to look into, and I don't want to offend him.
I'll handle it.
Awesome. So, can I get a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, or contingent that we get a letter stating or some, something from the individual that he is in agreement to it.
Jeff can take care of it and report back to us, or we can get an email or whatever?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Request to place a memorial sign for Dennis Morgan is approved contingent upon permission Okay, so, legal issues, memorandum of understanding from Matt.
This is an annual thing, just our representation from Hornstrom and Doring on legal services for the year. I don't want each party's...
No changes from last year, is there?
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the memorandum.
First and second, any discussion, questions? Go ahead and vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Memorandum of Understanding with Matt Gross is approved. Resolution 2020-1, contract with city official Dave Teague's Breakthrough Beverage.
This is, uh, been last year, too, I believe, on just the whole, being Dave Teague is a council member, his, he represents Breakthrough Beverage, which he sells to the city, kind of a conflict interest coverage for the year.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-1.
Second.
First and second, any questions or discussion? Congratulations, you're the very first resolution of the year. We'll go to vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Anthony Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-1, contract with city official Dave Teague's Breakthrough Beverage is approved. Resolution 2020-2, adopt annual fee schedule. Did we make any changes from last year?
The highlighted in yellow.
You want me to just go over the highlighted one?
Yeah.
My recommendation is to drop the animal license from 20 to $10 per year. We've received a lot of complaints on our fees. I think, what does Marshall add?
10.
10?
Yep.
So, I mean, we're twice of what our neighboring community was. That was one recommended change.
Our department raised some rates.
Orchard Lane with the EDA, the apartment, three and two-bedroom apartment rentals, there's two changes there. I think that was, Jeff, increased by...
$50 each.
$50 each.
It was decreased?
Increased.
Increased, okay.
Which means the deposits will go up also when we get a new resident.
Those are currently, what, nine?
Well, here it's the same.
Up to 850 and up to 950.
Okay.
The other one is in the fire department site for false alarm calls and full pages. For nuisance calls after the third call for a chief's page, they would charge the call fee for that.
Did the call fee go up?
The call fee is the same, it's just they didn't charge for false alarms before.
Would you get three?
Would you get three? Full page, anytime there's a full page for fire department, it's $750. And that's kind of to help offset the wage increase that was approved early in 2020.
I thought it was set at 1,500.
The call fee, I don't know, like, 750.
What was it, 1,500, then? Is there some fee at 1,500 with fire? Oh, the number sticks out in my head, I could be completely off-base. That's why I'm asking the question.
I think the insurance coverage in our area, the minimum call is 750, so we're kind of in that range. We used to be 500. I think it's been up to 750 for a little while now.
Okay.
Planning and zoning, we had a, actually, last planning and zoning meeting, we discussed this, so somewhere along the way, we had signed permit fees for the precinct standings, the wall signs, and the sign replacement. Well, our ordinance doesn't allow that unless it's, I think it's, has to be revolving, flashing, or, there's one more.
Yeah, there's...
Isn't it illuminated?
I don't think illuminated was covered either. It had to be flashing, revolving, or there's one other caveat out there.
And then it would just be a signed permit.
And then it would be a signed permit, but there's no fees attached to it. So, figuring until, unless they want to change the ordinance, which probably isn't worth what the fees are with the, with the signed fee schedule, we just let, just eliminate them altogether. Let's see where the next one is.
Your mosquito sprayer.
Yeah, mosquitoes, there's nothing in there right now, it means we spray for curry and sometimes sandborne, that's only every few years. We have some in the fee schedule, so we have, I'm going to go off of there. There's an athletic practice fee for the BMC. I don't think we've been charging that, but I...
Well, Chris said last year that if it's sports, if it's high school-related or sports-related directly to the high school, like jail volleyball, there's baseball camps and such here, it's a feeder to the high school program, he didn't, he didn't feel that there should be a fee for it.
As part of their contract.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's it. Anybody got any questions?
Make a motion to approve 2020-2, has it printed.
I'll second that. Any questions or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teague?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-2, adopt annual fee schedule is approved as amended, yeah? That would be accurate statement?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution 2020-3, appoint election officials for presidential nomination primary.
So, here's, we have the list of, in your packet, of the head judges for day and evening, and then the remaining judges, and also the rate.
Just so if people, I had a couple people question how they would ever get the opportunity to serve as an election judge, and I said, I think when there's an opening, we post something, because there's training that goes with it.
We advertise before every president, or primary in general. With this particular election, we are required to use the election judges that were certified at the last election, so we couldn't open it up to the general public. But yes, there is training involved, we advertise it on the carousel and the newspaper.
Before every primary election?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. And it...
And we need election judges.
We do need more?
We do, yeah.
There's always a shortage.
So it was a challenge.
I can tell that, too.
Perfect.
How soon before, you know, say the November election, how soon do, do we look for judges at? Because when we have to train them in...
It'll be end of May, first part of June that we'll start searching, yep.
And do we have a POC for that?
Pardon me?
Do we have a POC for that? Point of contact?
Yes, me.
Okay.
Me.
Folks need to know that.
So yes.
Awesome.
So people now know to, yes. Put in their names.
Well, uh...
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-3.
Second. First and second, any questions or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Tal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-3, appointment election judges for presidential nomination primary is approved. Resolution 2020-4, rescheduling improvement hearing.
We had the improvement hearing scheduled for the second meeting in January. To keep the new administrator involved, um, we waited to have the meeting on it, which is why they are looking for an extension on the hearing. In this case, we should have kept going, but we'll just, uh, just have to reschedule it because of timing.
Okay.
So it's the next meeting?
January twenty-seventh to ten February.
Yep.
Okay? Can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
First and second, questions or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2020-4, rescheduling improvement hearing is approved. Consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve municipal accounts, pay, municipal accounts payable without Breakthrough Beverage in Sanford Health. The planning commission meeting minutes from December second, the Tracy Relief Association minutes from eleven-four, ten-twelve-seven.
Second. Questions or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Without Breakthrough in Sanford.
Nope. Yep, Teigs.
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Dimmers?
Aye. So, municipal accounts payable without Breakthrough Beverage in Sanford Health, planning commission minutes from December second nineteen, and Tracy Relief Association minutes from eleven-four and twelve-seven nineteen are approved.
Make a motion to approve Breakthrough Beverage.
Uh, first and second, discussion or questions? Vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Breakthrough Beverage is approved.
Motion to approve Sanford.
Second.
Two seconds. Questions or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Sanford Health is approved. Unfinished business, we don't have any new business. Appointments, my favorite time of year. City clerk and administrator, Shane Daniels. So... Do we want to do these individually or all at one time?
We just do them as mayor appointments, after he reads them off?
Yep.
Do them individually, right? What did we do last year?
We probably do have to do them individually.
I thought that's what we do.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe, yeah.
Yep, alright, so, city clerk administrator, Shane Daniels, and I propose Shane continue in that capacity. So I would appoint Shane as the city clerk administrator.
So moved.
In the interest of time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved, uh, city clerk administrator Shane Daniels. Deputy clerk, Shane Daniels. Can you be the man and the second?
Yep.
And the deputy?
It's up for discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Deputy clerk is Shane Daniels, public works director Shane Daniels.
That one I'd like to keep.
So moved.
I would appoint Shane Daniels as a public works director, and first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, city attorney Matt Gross from Hornstrom and Doring, I would, uh...
Second.
Yep, I would stick with that appointment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Matt Gross remains our attorney. Fire chief Dale Don, Dale Johnson, I would make that appointment.
You have to make the motion here.
Motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Dale Johnson remains fire chief. Uh, assistant fire chief, Mike Herbs.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, assistant fire chief Tony Rowland.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, assistant fire chief is Tony Rowland and Mike Herbs. Uh, weed inspector Barton Meyer, I would appoint, we keep that.
Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Martin Meyer remains weed inspector. Barton Meyer is also a city forester, I would, uh, concur with that. Same, same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Barton Meyer is a city forester. Building inspector Shane Daniels, I would appoint Shane for another year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Shane Daniels, you are the building inspector for another year. City assessor, Lyon County assessor.
Make the motion.
Second.
That was, um, that changed this year, right? That went from, um, Ms. Kitchen Master to Bicep.
Well, the assessor did, but the...
Still a county, that doesn't...
Still a county.
Right, okay. Alright, first and, did I get a second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? County assessor remains. Civil defense director Jason Lickdee, I would, uh, stick with that appointment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Jason is civil defense. Council appointments, President Pro Tem. I would like that, I would like to change that to Ku Tao. Are you willing to serve in that capacity for the next year? Sure. Okay, can I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Alright. Community Ed Financial Advisory Board. Who is currently serving in that capacity, do you want to keep that?
Dave, how, how often do they meet? I didn't get any...
Didn't have one last year? Once.
I would hang on to that one, but I...
When I was on, we, I had met once, maybe twice a year.
Okay, I, I can keep that. Alright, I appoint Ku Tao to the Community Ed Financial Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I said aye on that as well. I use my inside voice. Planning commission member. Uh, that would be myself currently, anybody else want to serve in that capacity?
You're welcome to.
Well, I will appoint myself then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Mayor Dimmers will continue to serve in that capacity. Economic Development Authority. You guys have been on there a couple years, I want to change that up and put Ku and I there. Are you good with that?
Sure.
Can I get, uh, a motion?
So moved.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hospital Advisory Board, Jerry, you want to hang on to that? I'd say you're the, you're the most qualified.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one's approved. Wheels Crossed, the Prairie Museum, Dave is currently in that. Um, you wanted some discussion on that, Dave?
Well, I'm willing to keep it, but my calendar and when they calendar, I'm out of town for at least six of the meetings throughout the year. Like I said, I'm more than willing to keep doing it, but I just want to make sure they're getting the representation that they need and deserve.
Anybody else want to slide into that position?
Like I said, I'm willing to keep it, they haven't thrown rocks at me when I've shown up and missed a meeting, so we're probably fine and dandy, so I will keep doing that.
Okay, I'm good with that.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dave will stay with Wheels Crossed Prairie Museum. Uh, Duer Deputy Register Appointment, April Lickdee.
That was actually approved.
Already approved, okay, yep, I recall, so. Establishment of the time and place for council meetings. May twenty-fifth is Memorial Day. Motion to establish the second and fourth Mondays of each month at six-thirty PM in the council chambers of the municipal building. Essentially the same as we are now, and we can, as holidays and stuff come up, we can adjust as we go.
Can we just set May twenty-sixth? That's what we did last year.
Excuse me.
To Tuesday.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
I do have discussion. No, I don't, never mind. Never mind.
Okay. These are can of worms you don't want to open up?
No, I was thinking the first Monday, not the second Monday, because after the Fourth of July, that Monday was a legal holiday, but it's the first Monday.
Okay. So, I'm at a council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll keep going as we have been with that. Determination of the rules and order of business of council meetings, motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order and the Standard Agenda Format.
So moved.
Second. First and second, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Establishment of the official municipal newspaper, motion to approve, um... Yeah, Above the Fold, AKA Headlight Herald.
Do you still want it?
Are, are you, are you okay with serving in that capacity?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So... Moved, approved. Establish the official municipal depositories, motion, need a motion to approve Midwest Bank South, the Forum Fund, Morgan Stanley Smith Barney, Bremer Bank, State Farm, and Hyler's Investment Partners as such, US Bank.
So moved.
Discussion questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Mayor and Council Communications, city administration position. It came in this afternoon, I received a phone call and subsequent email that our soon-to-be-new city administrator has declined the position due to personal and family reasons. What I would like to suggest, given the, the timing of this and such a short notice, that, um, we table this till the next meeting to give ourselves time to kind of soak this in, consider our next course of action and, uh, you know, be able to give it some thought, and then we can approach it at the next meeting and discuss it at that time. How do you all feel about that?
You gave us a, a date. Are you willing?
The biggest thing is it will not be around, it's actually the week of the second council meeting of February.
Of February, okay.
So, if you can find some logistics of who could fill in my capacity, during that time, I would be willing to continue a little longer, so. May starts getting a little busy for us. But I would hopefully find something by then.
Then I agree, I'd rather wait, give it some thought versus...
Yeah, it, it came in like less than eight hours ago, so.
But I can do some research on my MNC, which if there's anybody within the office that could maybe want to step in as assistants or something in the meantime, but if that's something you guys want to do.
Yeah, we have...
The biggest thing is having someone to sign checks.
We have next meeting to discuss it.
Be two more meetings here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. But I can...
How do you feel about that, Tony?
Well, I'm looking at it this way, we got two problems. You're going to be missing for a while, and we've got to find somebody to cover for you for that missing period, and that still leaves us with our main problem, is we don't have an administrator. I think we need to start advertising again to the same media we did before as soon as possible, without a closed date at this time, and we could pick that later, but get that advertisement out with a closed date of until filled, until we can pick a better date just to get some, see if we can generate some interest. And then, you know, like I said, the check signing thing, it's, you gotta be around. So, I don't, and you can't really pick another council member to do it. Based on, you know, and both you guys work out of town, so there's quite a commitment in this check signing stuff. So I don't, you may want to research on what we can do to come up with another signator for that period.
Well, and the other thing that we have done is, I, I don't believe there's a lot of it that needs immediate, correct?
There's two checks per day.
Yep.
For sure.
Yep.
I'd have to look and see...
Because I can stop in here after work and sign them.
But you're already, your name's already on it.
So you can't.
Alright.
So it's, the segregation of duties is where it falls into with the auditors and, um, make sure the person that ain't...
But if you can find somebody that can, that could temporarily fill in.
Can Pro Tem sign it?
They have.
Because it's the same thing, I mean, if, you know, Ku could stop in after work and, you know, we just have to get ahead of the curve and then stay there.
And I don't know if...
I'd check into all the details of it.
Right, yeah, I mean, we got some time to deal with it, but...
But those, those are the two problems, I think the, the most immediate one is advertising. And then the rest can be, you can research and we can discuss at the next meeting.
So can I get a motion as to such?
That to start advertising, or if, which one you want to move to work?
Yes, that...
Make a motion to advertise for a position, city administrator with a...
Open end.
With an open end at this time.
With, in all the resources that we used...
That we used previously, yeah.
To go out to the other states.
And then we'll discuss it at length and detail at next meeting.
Right.
Okay, can I get a second on that? I'll, I'll second it.
Same, same wording, right?
Yeah.
I'll, uh, I'll second that. Anybody, any questions or discussion? Go to vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Tal?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So the motion to advertise immediately, same wording, open end. So the motion to advertise immediately, same wording, open end, and then full council discussion next meeting.
I'm pretty sure in all, two of the states had limits on how long they'll advertise, I wanna say it's a month.
Probably as well, yeah.
And, and I understand that, but.
I'll just tell them to keep it open a month.
From a candidate's point of view, they see until filled, they can make a mental note of that, even if it's no longer being advertised, they may call and say, well, hey, is it still available, it's still open, so.
Do that.
Okay, um, we have no need for a closed meeting tonight, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Any questions or discussions about that? Go to vote.
Shones.
Aye.
Tal.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Teigs.
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers.
Aye. The normal meeting is adjourned.